Twenty-seventh year of our Lord, 2024, 6:00 P.M. Item two, roll call, City Secretary?
Mayor Hoven.
Present.
Mayor Protem Swanner.
Present.
Mayor Protem Mata.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Vasquez.
Present.
Councilmember Cornell.
Present.
Councilmember Haney.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Item three, invocation will be given to us by Pastor Taylor Robles of Sherwood Church of Christ, and then led by the Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge by Councilmember Cornell. Uh, Pastor, welcome. The floor is yours. Anybody wishing to join us for a moment, prayer can do so by standing up voluntarily.
That was pretty good. Father, we come to you this evening. We recognize you, Father, as our King and our Lord. Thank you, my God, for blessing us in considerable ways. We thank you, Father, for this great country that we get to live in. We thank you, Father, for the blessings that come with that. We also thank you, Father, for the city of Odessa. We pray, my God, that the articles that are discussed here today will only, uh, greater benefit the citizens of Odessa, that we all have a calm attitude and gracious hearts. Um, and, uh, and we all want to see the city of Odessa thrive and, um, become an impact in the Permian Basin. Father, we thank you for the leaders here. We have scriptural references, Father, that we should pray for them, and so that's what we do right now as well. We ask you, Father, that you will bless these leaders who are making decisions, that they do not take it lightly. They, uh, approach these decisions humbly, courageously, and faithfully for the citizens of the city. Father, we thank you most of all for Jesus Christ. We thank you for his act of love upon the cross, uh, where he sacrificed himself for our sins. We thank you, Father, for the blood that removes those sins from us. We thank you, Father, for the promise of heaven, being able to spend eternity with you. Thank you for the promise of life. Thank you most of all for Jesus Christ. In his name we pray, my God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We do not have any proclamations. Citizen comments on non-agenda items. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. As your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. In accordance with the open meetings law, the city council cannot respond. However, council can direct the city's manager or staff to contact you. We do have one speaker card. Luke Wallace.
Do I gotta go up there?
Yes, please, to the podium.
All right, I'll try and keep it quick. Uh, my name's Luke Wallace. Um, when we were discussing the carports, uh, back, I believe, April, one of the councilmen made a comment about how, uh, he was concerned that the carports may make Odessa look junky with people piling stuff up under there and everything. Um, since then, I've been driving around, I've been looking at town, and one of the things that really gets me about how Odessa doesn't look good is our streets. It's our curbs. We've got more grass growing in our curbs than we do in our yards and on our sidewalks, weeds and stuff like that. If I drive around other communities, I don't really see that. And I don't know whose responsibility it is to clean up those curbs and streets, uh, sidewalks, I'm assuming it's the cities. And then you also see it a lot in our, our parking lots of our community. Drive down Eighth Street, Forty-second, just weeds and junk just everywhere. Nobody seems to wanna clean it up or care about it. So just something for y'all to think about. Uh, the other thing is the noise by, uh, codes. Um, you know, people in the neighborhoods crank up their music, whatever. You're sitting in your own home and you hear music. You know, you can't even read, watch TV or whatever, and you call the cops and they say, "Well, it's not ten o'clock yet. We can't do anything about that." So another thing for y'all to think about. And the last thing, and this just came up, 'cause last night we almost lost three more cyclists out on Yukon. There was a wreck out there, I don't know who all knows about it, but we almost lost three more guys. And I'd like to, again, bring up the Wildcat Trail, 'cause this community, Midland and Odessa both, has no non-motorized, uh, roads anywhere. And the more we grow, the worse it's getting. And the cyclists aren't gonna quit riding, and we need a safe place for those guys. I got hit last year. Uh, had my pelvis and my back broke, and they gave that lady a $450 ticket, no insurance, no driver's license, and they, she drove off while I'm being carted off to, uh, the hospital. So we really need to get something about that done. Anyway, that's all I got, trying to keep it under three. Thank you, guys.
Any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of its agenda items before or during the consideration of the item. Council will overlook the consent, uh, consent agenda as it's presented and entertain a motion for approval for, uh, not approving or for amending. So move, we approve? I have a motion by Councilmember Vasquez to approve the agenda as presented, second by Councilmember Thompson, all in favor indicating by motion by aye. All those, uh, against, same side. Motion passed unanimously. We're gonna move on to a public hearing. Item ten, no, I'm sorry, uh, item, uh, seven, regular. Item six, consider rejecting all bids for Comanche Trail Park Pond liner replacement. Mr. Reyes, is that, Mr. Reyes?
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Mr. Reyes had an emergency solvency filling in this evening. Uh, we are recommending to request, uh, reject all bids due to a safety concern along the east side of the pond, where the edge of the pond, uh, would be in close proximity of the sidewalk. To mitigate any risk of tripping and potentially falling into the pond, we are proposing to create a six-foot separation area or a fall zone between the sidewalk and the pond.
Okay, explain that. What do you mean?
Uh, so the, the edge of the pond is, uh, too close to the sidewalk, and we're just afraid that people are gonna trip and somebody may hurt themselves falling in the pond. Uh, with, with the, uh, with the proposal that we had, uh, out, so...
What would the barrier look like?
Yeah, I'm sorry?
What would the barrier look like?
Uh, it'll be, uh, si- just a six-foot, uh, native area, dirt area between the sidewalk and the pond.
So, um, so how, how much further are you gonna be pushing out the replacement of the liner?
I'm sorry?
Are you gonna push it out as far as starting the, the construction of, of replacement? Are you gonna push that out, further out?
We, we understand the, the need to, uh, hustle on this project and get it done. Uh, so we're preparing another proposal, also looking at, uh, buyboard purchases, uh, to, to get it done as quick as possible.
Okay.
Are, are we gonna ex- expand the size of the pond?
The, the pond will be, uh, it's not gonna be expanded. Uh, it's, uh, roughly eighty-two thousand to eighty-five thousand square feet, and it'll, it'll maintain that, that, uh, that, uh, that measurement.
So, John, one quick question. Y'all, y'all, is it still leaking out soon?
Uh, yes, sir.
It's got no water in it.
Oh, I haven't been, I haven't been over there, so. It's almost rotten. Have y'all considered, uh, putting mud down there? I mean...
So potentially the, uh, instead of, uh, excavating or removing the old pond liner, keeping that liner in, in the pond, uh, putting about a, a foot of dirt or mud on top of that liner, and then the, the new liner on top of it.
'Cause I understand that the clay, the clay on the liner works pretty good, so...
Yes, sir.
Okay, just one more question.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, about how much time are we adding to this, John? Do you have any idea? Are we adding another two or three months to this?
Uh, definitely not two to three months. Uh, we're hoping to have the project completed within a month, I would say.
Okay. Completed or, or...
Completed. If we were able to do a buyboard purchase potentially within a month, if it, if we put a proposal back out, it'll probably be about a month and after two months.
Okay. Council, any other questions?
Yeah, we just gotta, I wanna make this priority because it is right there off the interstate, too. And it just, I know we let it, it drains, and we could replace this, but for people driving by who don't really know what's going on, it just, it is an eyesore.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I know, I know this is just part of the process, so, uh, yeah, just put the buyboards, we can...
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Do we have any more, any more scheduled programs going on?
At McKinney, or at the Comanche Trail? We've got a five-k, uh, run on September the fourteenth coming up that will be, uh, at McKinney and Comanche Trail. Uh, we postponed the Take Me Fishing event, uh, because of the pond liner project, and uh, we'll, we'll reschedule that as soon as we complete the project.
Okay, that's what, that was what I was trying to remember, when that, uh, that, that project goes on.
Yes, sir.
Um, so then what action do we have to take here? Are we just postponing this, or we...
We gotta reject, reject, we gotta make the motion reject.
Okay, and then you guys will come back with a...
And then I'll come back with...
All right, so let's just, uh, bypass the work session when we bring it back and bring it straight to, to council and discuss it there. That way, we're not adding another two weeks to that.
Understood, yes, sir.
Make a motion to reject all bids for Comanche Trail Park liner replacement?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item six as presented. All those in favor indicating by motion of aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir. We're gonna move on to item seven, consider the purchase of pump and motor for Derrington Plant. Ms. Rolet, Mr. Rolet?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're asking for your consideration and approval of the purchase of a new pump and motor for our Derrington wastewater reuse station. We currently only have two working pumps and two working motors. Uh, this purchase is for a backup pump and motor to meet our contractual obligations for providing Exxon or Pioneer, uh, the reused water for their fracking operations. Uh, the total cost of this purchase is eighty thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-two cents. Uh, we did receive other quotes, which were either more expensive or the motors quoted were not compatible with our current pump and motor setup. Uh, the appropriation of this money, uh, is in our current budget.
Council, any, uh, questions? If not, entertain a motion for approval, item seven, as presented by... So move. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second, all in favor indicating by aye. All opposed indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Item eight, consider approval to obtain the services of Parks and Corporation for the rebuilding of Bob Derrington's existing Aqua Guard. Ms. Rolet?
Uh, good evening again, Mayor and Council. We're asking for your consideration and approval to obtain the services of Parks and Corporation for the rehabilitation of our bar screen at our Derrington wastewater treatment plant. The bar screen filters out solids from the influent wastewater entering the plant. Currently, we are working with one of the two bar screens due to the accumulation of damage to the screen needing rehab. Uh, this rehab is critical to remove, uh, or of the removal of the solids entering the plant that could harm the environment inside the plant. The cost of the rehab is two hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars. Uh, we do have this in our current budget.
Will this affect the operation?
No, sir. I currently, we are currently running with one. Uh, that bar screen is a hundred percent complete. Uh, there's no issue with that one.
Well, that's the one we replaced last...
We just replaced it not too long ago. Yes, sir. So, uh, this pretty much is just gonna completely rehab that bar screen. Uh, it's, pretty much takes everything that people decide to...
Yeah, I got it.
Put it down home, so...
And continue to go forward. Council, you need discussion on any items, comments?
Just interested on the timeframe. What do you think it'd take to take the, put the second one in?
Uh, they have to rehab, it's somewhere between six to nine months. They will, they, they will do this on location when they add it to it, so, I'm at six to nine months.
All right. No further questions, entertain a motion to approve item eight as presented.
So move.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor indicating by saying aye. All those opposing indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item nine, consider additional work for the water treatment plant rehab and miscellaneous upgrades. Ms. Rolet, go ahead.
Good evening again. We are asking for your consideration and approval to transfer one million dollars from our contingency fund of the water treatment rehab project to the general contractors' available funds. This additional change order is essential to complete our original design of the rehab rehabilitation of the water treatment plant. The original design implemented a hydraulic relief line for our venturi filters in Clearwell One to be able to produce fifty-five million gallons of water to the city in a single day. Currently, the capacity of water distribution in a day with our current infrastructure to the city is forty million gallons. I would say it's more like thirty-seven, thirty-six. It's, that's more of where we sit at. The reason for this change order is due to three forty-eight inch valves not properly closing, preventing the isolation of Clearwell One. We are needing to implement four line stops to isolate the Clearwell. While we have the line ends, line stops in place, we will change out all three valves off the Clearwell. The cost of the four line stops, replacement valves, and labor are one million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars. We do have the funds and the, uh, available in the contingency fund and plan to start work October first to complete this work if approved.
Council, any questions? You have no questions or comments, entertain a motion to...
How, how do we have that?
Okay, so I've got all this done. I've got all this lined up. I knew that, I knew that was gonna happen.
We're spending, we're spending a lot of money around here.
I knew that was gonna happen, so give me just one second. Let me pull it off.
Well, it's been, of course, but...
Uh, okay, here it is. Okay, so currently in excess, uh, we did a two million dollar change order, uh, we moved two million out already. We've only spent four hundred thousand, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, around there. So currently, right now, in that account, we've got one million, five hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. I'm, I'm asking to move one million over. That'll be, uh, and once we pay the one million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, then after that, we will have, uh, available for change orders, uh, six hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-five. Hopefully, we don't occur any more change orders this...
And the one million transfer is coming out from where?
The contingency fund.
Contingency, that's right.
So then, the contingency fund would then, um, right now, we've got, you took the five million out for the valves, so we've got five million, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Um, so that's what we would have after we moved that over, plus we took the five million out for the valves.
You already have the eight eighty-one in budget right now.
Yes, sir. So that five, that we would still have five million left. Or, I'm sorry, close to six million, five point nine million left in contingencies for the project.
And that's coming out of this year's budget?
The contingency fund, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yes. Yes, sir, so... So we still have plenty of money in that contingency fund once we, if we are to do that, if anything else pops up.
It's not really a budget.
It's not in the budget.
It's not in a budget, it's...
It's not really a budget.
Okay, yeah, it's just separate.
And there's still other contingencies that could be used for this, but if we go over that five million in change orders as far along as we are now...
We're in trouble.
Yeah, you could roll about eighty-five percent more.
Be honest.
Yeah, we chose the wrong company at that point.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't believe we did, so...
Okay.
I'm not saying...
The, the work we're doing is very imperative. We have to, it's gonna be able to raise our...
Everybody on this council agrees what you're doing is not just cosmetic. It is, it is long overdue.
Yes, sir.
And so, but we just wanna know where we, uh, council just wants to know is, okay, we're spending all this money, where does it come from, too? How much is still there?
Yes, sir.
We don't wanna drop it down to zero.
I agree, aye, sir.
Because there's still a lot of work to be done.
Absolutely, there is, aye, sir.
Any further questions, discussion? Not entertain a motion to approve item nine?
So move.
I have a motion, you have a second? Second. I have a motion and a second, uh, Councilman Swanner, Councilman Cornell, all in favor indicating by, uh, motion of aye. All opposed indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
And so, yeah, we're gonna, now we're going to the public hearing. Item ten, open a public hearing for fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget. Ms. Banda? Take your time. I got seven forty-five.
This should not take long. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Take your time. We're moving a little too fast.
Okay. So we are here today to open the public hearing on the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Um, you all spent many hours of your time going through a, a budget retreat, um, and had many in-depth discussions, so we're finally coming to the, the point where it's time to start doing kind of these, um, red tape things, all the regulations we have to meet, and then we will come back on the tenth for you all to adopt the budget. So just some very quick highlights. Um, the budget was filed with the city secretary as per requirements on August twelfth, 2024. The budget had an increase in property tax of two point seven million dollars, resulting in fifty-four million dollars in budgeted property tax revenue. This revenue figure was calculated based off of a point four six six cent per hundred dollar valuation tax rate compared to last year's point four eight three cent rate, so it, it was a decrease in that rate. The sales tax this year is budgeted at fifty million dollars, which is a more conservative approach than we took to last year. Total revenues across the board, so this is for all of, all of our funds, the whole city, total revenues are budgeted at two hundred and eighty-two million dollars, and that's operating, and total operating expenditures are budgeted at two hundred and seventy-eight million dollars. That leaves us an operating surplus of four million dollars. Additionally, twenty-seven million dollars will be expended out of healthy fund balance reserves to accommodate for capital asset replacements that some of our departments have identified are, are dire in need to replace, as well as non-recurring expenditures. There will be a three percent increase in water rates, a three percent increase in sewer rates, and a three point five percent increase in the solid waste rates. And once again, we will be coming back to vote on the rates and the budget, um, September tenth.
Council, discussion? When will the rate increases take place?
It'll be, um, at the New Year is the intent for that.
October first?
Fiscal year.
Budget year.
Yes.
Thank you.
The only comment I'd like to make for the public is that we are lowering the rate two cents because of the increased valuations and new constructions, if my memory serves me correctly, so...
Yes.
I think that's important for people to understand, so...
Yes.
We're trying to keep them as low as we can.
Mm-hmm, definitely. We love to see the, the new construction, the new developments, because that does help our citizens who are already existing in their homes, so, yes, sir.
Yeah, it's an opposite. Uh, any further comments, questions? What action do we need to take? Okay, anybody, are we taking any action tonight? We just, just feel it open? Okay. This is an open, uh, public hearing. I will now, uh, anyone wishing to comment or discuss, uh, this is a hearing for the fiscal year budget of 2024, 2025. You can do so by coming forward, uh, stating your full name and only for, your full name, and you'll be given three minutes. You can do so by coming up now. Everybody can just take a line, go one at a time, be orderly, and be sub. Okay. Seeing that nobody is really eager to do this, uh, we'll now c- close the public hearing phase. Uh, no further action taken. Ms. Banda, thank you very much. We are now going to item eleven, open a public hearing to consider the request by ICA Incorporated Owner for a zone change from FD Future Development District to LC Light Commercial. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, the property involved in this, sorry. Request is located on the north side of Mission Boulevard, approximately seven hundred and eighty feet east of Highway one ninety-one. Uh, the site is currently zoned as future development, um, and it's coming in with the request to go, uh, to local, uh, light commercial district. This will be for a shopping center, um, in this area. Um, and we, the staff did route it out to our re- local representatives in-house. There was no objections to this. We did take it to PNZ on August fifteenth of 2024, and there was no objection. Therefore, staff is recommending for a zone change from future development to light, uh, commercial.
Go back a couple of slides. Where the, had the satellite aerial? Yeah, that one right there. Oh, okay. Wasn't too sure, couldn't, I'll write it myself, okay.
If you wanted, uh, location, it's where the, part of the vast peril will be sitting at.
Right, right this way.
Right here?
Yeah, yeah, right there, right there. Okay.
That's cool. Where's the school?
Um, it's that purple...
The R, MF one.
Yeah, the MF one.
Yeah.
Just trying to make sure that, that's well underway.
Yes. Okay, council, do we have any questions before the public hearing? Any comments? All right. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this can do so by coming forward, taking the same approach by calmly and civilly lining up, writing, if you're giving your full name, only your full name, you can do so by coming forward now. Any special requests for any business that wanted coming into the development? Seeing that nobody's coming forward, I will close the public hearing portion of this. Council, if no discussion, entertain a motion to approve item eleven as presented. I so move. I have a motion by Councilmember Vasquez, second by Councilmember Thompson, all in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicate by same sign. Motion passed unanimously. We're gonna move on to resolutions. Item twelve, consider authorizing the transfer of funds from reserves to add a multi-key encryption multi-system over-the-air rekeying system. Tagirre, you're gonna have to explain what all that means.
Yes, good evening. Uh, would like for you to consider authorizing the transfer of funds from reserves to add multi-key encryption and multi-system over-the-air rekeying system to existing radios for the Odessa fire rescue. On November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at a regular, regularly scheduled city council meeting, council members approved the purchase of fifty-eight Motorola Apex eight thousand radio, portable radios to replace their existing aging equipment. New radios provide better technology advancements, including digital capabilities allowing for encryption communications.
So the short story is, so we ordered some radios, it'd take like six months to get in, they got here, they were the wrong color, we sent them back. They came back about three weeks ago. We went to program them, they were missing a feature we needed, so we have to pay for that additional feature, and Noberto can explain what that feature does.
So basically what that feature does is it gives us multi-key, um, capabilities. Right now, the way the radios sit, it's a single key encryption. So we use four encryption keys for the Odessa, um, radio system, and then when we do the Permian Basin regional system, we're probably gonna add another four, and that's what this capability is for. All the other radios we have, have that capability. This one just, they didn't come with them, so we just have to add it.
Was it, was it not specked out with that, with that, those capabilities, or was just an oversight?
Motorola changed their way they specked everything out, and they, they, they left it off, basically is what happened.
So we asked for it, we just didn't get it. We didn't pay for it either, but it's about when we went to program it, it was missing.
So you're gonna have to modify them manually within, uh, within your department and do each one?
Uh, well, actually, they're brand-new radios, so the, um, vendor, local vendor, MCA, that does all our, our radio system maintenance, they're gonna, they're gonna eat the cost and they're gonna come in with the, what you basically do is flash the radio and upgrade that feature in the radio.
Okay.
So they're gonna do that for us.
It's a software upgrade, not... It's a software upgrade, not.
Oh, software, not physical?
Yes. Well, here's a real question here. What color did they come in and sent them back? Were they like a bright yellow or orange?
They came in black, but all the radios for fire are like a neon green.
Yeah.
And for the firemen, basically for the firemen.
Ah, okay.
So they can see him and.
Okay, so you can easily find them when you misplace them. Okay.
Before they drop in the fire.
Of course not. All right. Oh, true, that is true, and they never admit to anything you they don't know. Do we have any questions, any comments, now that we got the color color deal stringed out? If not, entertain a motion to approve item twelve as presented. Have a motion by Councilmember Mata, second by Councilmember Swann, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating the same sign. Motion passing unanimously. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to item thirteen, consider adopting a new rate review mechanism with utmost energy. Mr. Beckner?
And this is just basically the yearly adoption of the new rate. A little bit of background, though, is Atmos came in wanting to do a six point seven million dollar increase. Thomas Baracco, probably missing his name up, anyhow, he's the lawyer that represents us with Atmos, with TCAP, with Encore, with everybody like that, basically energy lawyer. They went in and they looked at it and they reduced it to five point eight. Their consultants then conducted discovery and prepared a report totaling two point seven, and basically they got it down to four point three million dollar increase instead of the six point seven. And in your packets, there should be some rate sheets that were included in there. If not, I can give them to you. But this is basically just accepting it. It's going to happen, it just has to happen through a resolution.
You've had one every, it happened every year.
Yeah.
Not a big increase anymore.
It's a big increase, but fortunately, we have some pretty good lawyers to keep us from having as big of an increase.
It comes out to, for the average consumer, a dollar twenty seven per month, average on residential bills. So let's pray for a wet winter and not a very cold winter. Counsel, if there are no discussion or comments, entertain a motion to approve the new rate mechanism.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mata, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating the same sign. Motion passing unanimously. We're going to move on to item fourteen, consider approval of bid award in agreement with Vanco Insulation Incorporated to provide demolition and removal services for possibly thirty two, three thousand two hundred and eighty square feet. Ms. Vicas, how are you doing?
Good evening.
One, let me congratulate you on your your new position.
Thank you.
And so looking forward to you working in that department. We're going to miss you here in the in the legal, but we'll be able to see you there every two days.
Put a smile on her face that she got.
Thank you. My voice is kind of failing me. This is for the property, the commercial property located at three thirty Wabash. It's been an eyesore and a problem for a while, and this is just for the consideration of approval of the bid award with Vanco Insulation, so they can go ahead and start the demo. It did go out for bid, and the amount came back at seventy four thousand one hundred thirty one. And I'm just here to see if y'all can approve that so we can go forth.
Is this kind of your but your budget?
Yes, it is budgeted. It is a commercial building, so it is under general.
It is commercial?
Yes. Mm hmm. It is budgeted for twenty three, twenty four.
I wouldn't know, would you?
Counsel, we do have a speaker card.
Any denials?
No, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council.
Good afternoon.
Just food for thought, this building, this address, three thirty Wabash, when I was a kid, not the existing building, but the building before this building was a silver half, barn shape type building, and that's where black entertainers came, people such as Ike and Tina Turner. I know I know Gibber, nobody, Ike and Tina Turner, because he's a great dancer and stuff. But like you said, this building has been an eyesore. There has been lots of development in this area in the last year and a half, half, there have been probably ten affordable work homes built in that area, but to them from two thirty five by two sixty. I currently have one home for sale in that area at two sixty five. If you guys got some pocket change, it's helpful for a broke guy out, and I plan to have another two by the end of the year. We're doing groundwork and plans on that. I'm working with a friend of mine that have purchased the two hundred and three hundred block, both sides, eighty percent of Washington Lane, which is immediately in front or behind this building site. So by us moving ahead to destroy this building, clean the lot, and hopefully, you know, I or him or some other guys I know can buy this piece of property that we can put some more affordable homes in in there. And also like to thank everybody that has worked on this project. You know, we have had a homeless guy living there since December, and he has totally gathered up everything that everybody else did not want in this city and and had put it in his deal and called it treasures. So and I noticed that code enforcement has been working, cleaning that up. So I'd like to thank Dan in particular, Mr. Bernard in particular, I think I've spoken to those guys several times. I mean, it's just an eyesore for me to get up and walk down there, and I shouldn't probably be walking down there, but I walked down there to see this building. So hopefully you approve the 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 progress to turn this building down. Thank you.
So this property going to be be available to get back on the tax rolls and be able to be purchased and developed at a future point?
It was it was auctioned off probably a year and a half ago.
Okay.
Now, whether or not these guys going to develop or whether they actually sell.
Those that bought it.
Those that bought it, right. But we will be inquiring with those guys to see if they're interested in selling, and if so, we're we're trying to develop it.
So help me order to, so because I'm not familiar with three thirty Wabash, where so landmarks?
Landmark, you know, the building, the Lee Avenue, that we have had some problems with.
Yeah.
That's a block and a half east of there, west, east of there.
Okay.
On on in the actually the same block, like it's a kind of, we call it the pink building. It used to be the Odessa City Federation Building, and I think it got in disrepair. Some of the members of the Odessa City Ladies Federation have since went to glory. So so this building got in disrepair, and it's just sit there as an eyesore.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I was trying to imagine, I just could not do that. Well, I appreciate that.
And you can tell them I have a little cabotat tractor that's full of diesel, and I'm willing to help as much as I can. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. I think that's a I think that's a a favor. All right, seeing any further discussion on this item, if not, entertain a motion to approve item fourteen as presented.
I so move, Ms. Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilmember Vasquez, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. We'll go by Mitch Kanel. The trainee?
Hanny.
Councilman Hanny, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating the same sign. Motion passing unanimously. Then move on to item fifteen, consider to apply and accept funds for the City of Odessa Police Department from the twenty twenty four HIDTA grant for thirty two thousand and fifty. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is simply a request to apply for and accept funds in the amount of thirty two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars from the HIDA, the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Grant paid for from DEA. These, there is no cash match from the city for this. This is just money that comes into us. Eleven thousand of that, eleven thousand of that amount would go for overtime, sixteen hundred and fifty for fringe, about six thousand for supplies, and and fourteen thousand, it says, for contractuals, and that really is vehicles, undercover vehicles for the two officers.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
Chief Kirk, what is a fringe?
A fringe, just, you know, some of the things that attach to a person's salary.
Okay. Fringe benefits, there we go, there we go, makes sense.
Well, it's it's those things such as, you know, the the extra insurance, that sort of thing that you're paying for the overtime.
Right.
Yeah, there's fringe. That's just what DEA calls it.
Any further questions? Any further interrogation interrogation of the chief?
Move approval.
Anybody want to ask him about what happened in this wood? If no further discussion, I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Swann, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating the same sign. Motion passing unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item sixteen, consider approving and amend and restate performance agreement between the Odessa Development Corporation, Walkman Trading Company. Mr. Kirk, Dr. Kirk, go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is my first time I'm bringing this information to you. I think I have five agenda items. Let's consider a revelation, resolution approving the amended and restated performance agreement between Odessa Development Corporation and Walkman Trading Company. On our, I'm read this, on around about February twenty four, Odessa Development Corporation and Walkman Trading Company entered into a performance agreement amount of six thousand, six million five hundred thousand for the purpose of infrastructure costs related to development of a light industrial park generally located north of Yukon Road near North Fodry Road. ODC and Walkman desire to amend and restate the mutual obligations of the parties. They're lowering that amount from eight point five million down to six point five million now. Commencement and construction has been charged, changed from July twenty four to October twenty four, and the reimbursement for qualified expenditures have been changed from sixty days to thirty days, and Exhibit B was removed and removed. Any questions about that?
Counsel, any questions? The package is right before you. If anybody's gone through that, have any questions, it's this, this agreement in our packet right here.
Yeah.
It's been amended and restated performance agreement.
As I recall, it was the cost of some of the engineering costs went down, and I believe that's why.
That's why the adjustment.
Eight point five million dollars.
And then the black top.
Yeah.
There were, there were several. There are several things that went down. Mr. Bell made some good deals with the developers out there.
Well, this is the example, this is example of a public-private partnership that works because they, he didn't have to go get, go get three bids. He got the bids he wanted, and then he negotiated from there, which saved us all a lot of money.
Yeah.
Which is what I love about this arrangement.
Two million bucks.
Two million bucks is not chump change.
The, one of the side benefits is that it also saves sportsmen some money.
Yes. Yeah, because they can tie into the, some of the contracts if they move quick enough is what Larry has mentioned.
Yeah.
Okay. And I think that both contractors have agreed to that. So that's a good deal for everybody.
Counsel, seeing there is no more questions or comments on this item, entertain a motion to approve item sixteen as presented by Dr. Kirk.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mata, second by Councilmember Thompson, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating the same sign. Motion passing unanimously. Move on to item sixteen, remove from the table to consider economic development performance agreement between the Odessa Development Corporation Rental King LLC. Dr. Kirk?
Mayor?
Yes.
You got to have a motion or you got to remove it.
I'm sorry. I need a motion from the council to remove item seventeen from the table.
I so move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, second by Councilmember Vasquez, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating the same sign. Motion is approved. It is removed from table. Dr. Kirk, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Consider economic development performance agreement between Odessa Development Corporation and Rental King. Need a little summary of what they do. I can give you anything here that. Rental King LLC rents leases construction, mining, and forestry machinery and equipment. They'll make a capital investment of approximately two point one million dollars for the acquisition of land and building, manufacturing facility located in Etto County, and will create and maintain twelve full-time equivalent jobs, appointment positions, minimum annual payroll of two hundred and thirty five thousand during the term of the agreement. This is at six hundred and thirty six thousand, will go out over five years.
Counsel Dean, do you have any questions, any comments?
Just out of curiosity, how long, I understand this company is coming in from Midland?
I think so.
How long were they in Midland as far as, do you have any idea about that?
I do not know the answer to that. I've seen their billboards, but I don't know the answer, how long they've been in Midland.
Well, the greater point is we get a two point one million dollar building, which is, will be on the tax rolls, they haven't asked for any abatements or tax considerations, which is terrific, not counting the tap fees and everything else that go along with it.
Okay. Has everybody looked at page five at thirteen on the year five payouts? It's a hundred and twenty seven thousand two hundred annually for five years. Counsel, any questions, any further questions or comments? Now entertain a motion for approval on item seventeen.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swann, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thompson, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating the same sign. Motion passing unanimously. Now you're on a roll, Dr. Kirk. Item nineteen, consider approval of the Odessa Development, eighteen? Oh, I'm sorry. Consider approval of the Odessa Development Corporation budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Odessa Development Corporation is required to adopt a proposed budget of expected revenues and proposed expenditures for the next ensuing fiscal year, which shall contain such classifications and shall be in such form as may be prescribed in, from the time to time by the council. ODC approved this budget on August twentieth, twenty four, board meeting. The budget shall not be effective until the same has been approved by the Odessa City Council. Any questions on that budget?
Your beginning fund balance is eighty nine million, five hundred and eighty five thousand. Project in, uh, projection in fund balance of forty nine million, ninety four thousand for year twenty four, twenty five. We got about fourteen million, seventy million to the tech stop. Is that what we got?
Yeah, that's for, that's so we can move some of those projects up. If we participate at some level, they sure like it. So we're able to get, in other words, like on the eighty seventh street overpass, Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, if we kick in, instead of twenty six, we could probably get it moved up a little bit. That's the hope anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why that money's there. That's what we used on Yukon and three thirty eight.
Okay, okay.
And also just, just to make a point for the public, there's been some talk that the downtown infrastructure grants have been removed. It's no longer, no longer a program, but it's still on the.
It's not been removed.
It hasn't been removed, that's what I'm saying. There's been some talk that it has been, but it hasn't been, it's still, it's not a program.
Yeah, it's, so there's been, I've been getting a lot of calls and seeing a lot of chatter, and it's election time, I understand that, but the thing is, is that there's a lot of misinformation that the, we removed and got rid of the entire program, and that the fund has been depleted. Well, there's never been a set fund or to deplete, so these are based on applications, and the and the ODC has complete autonomy to this. The process is going through, if I'm correct, going through the the chamber or Tom Mansky. And so the only thing that was removed was the city's portion aspect. Is that correct?
That's correct, and we met with Tom Mansky last week, and we're working on basically, kind of like what I said earlier, with other projects, codifying how people come in, they'll they'll dilate them, and these are the steps to go through.
Yeah, it'd be helpful.
It's, it is still in place, and it will thrive.
I think we're going to see more on another agenda coming up on that.
Okay, then we'll be able to discuss it then. Counsel, do we have any questions on item teen, item eighteen as presented by Dr. James Kirk? Now entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mata, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating the same sign. We're going to move on to item nineteen, consider approval of the Odessa Development Corporation General Development Plan for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Doctor?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Odessa Development Corporation is required to adopt an economic development plan each year, which shall include but both short-term and long-term goals for the economic development of the city, proposed methods for the elimination of unemployment and underemployment, and the promotion of employment through the expansion and development of sound industrial and manufacturing base for and within the city. The ODC has adopted this plan on August twentieth, twenty four. Plan shall not be effective until the same has been approved by the city council. And there's a lot of detail in here if you have questions about it.
Counsel, do we have any questions?
Yeah, the one, one question I had, I forgot to look. The chamber agreement is is off that.
It's in effect.
Silly quarterly thing.
It's in effect.
Annual like everybody else.
Yeah, it's annually.
Just making sure.
Yes, sir.
I forgot to look.
So, um, so section C, Odessa Development Corporation Infrastructure Facade Grant Program, Article One Infrastructure Program. So it's all read in here. So that'd be page eight of eighteen. Let's enter that into the record, Article Two Facade Program, page nineteen of eighteen. So it's, once again, it's not been canceled, and it's not been taken out by the staff in this city, in the city council, and there is no existing fund with existing funds to have been depleted.
Right.
And so.
On that infrastructure facade, it mentions that reimburse fifty percent but not more On that infrastructure facade, it mentions that reimburse fifty percent but not more than two hundred thousand toward the total project cost qualifying infrastructure.
Yes.
Facade was similar but less.
Yeah. Yeah. Funds are subject to Section five oh one point one zero three. I would really advise for anybody that's questioning this. ODC reserves have, you know, so it's all right here. Thank you. Really appreciate that. So, let me ask this question. So, the question is, there was discussion with the city, staff with, in this process with ODC about the administration. So, there were two proposals that were posted to the ODC.
And so, we're going back to the way it used to be here a couple of years ago, where City Attorney's Office, City Secretary, we will be more actively involved. I think it ended up being, correct me if I'm wrong, like two nineteen, I think, is what they're gonna pay the city, what ODC is gonna reimburse the city, two nineteen. And so, yes, everything that council requested, ODC gave it.
So, well, the thing is, we'll be able to handle the postings to come through here to the council, and then wind up doing the posting.
Yes.
And in the minutes, and then to recheck with the packages. They're all completely.
Right, that's exactly, and we're gonna, so, when I say we, I mean to say Tina. We'll go, we'll go back and be doing the agenda and working with Tom on that, but we will primarily, she will be taking care of it primarily. And then, anything that we need with Jeff Moore, I will be the point of contact. So, if someone for ODC wants to contact Jeff Moore and talk to him, then that's okay. If one of you wanna talk to him, that's okay. I'll just be included in it as a point of reference, a point of contact. So, everything that y'all have asked for has been granted by ODC.
Good. Counsel, any discussion on this item? Anything on item nineteen as presented? Dr. Kirk, anything else?
But I'll have.
See if there is no more discussion, counsel. Entertain a motion to adopt item nineteen as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Mata. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously. One more. You are really here for a punishment. Item twenty, consider approval of six economic development contract agreements with the Odessa Development Corporation. Dr. Kirk?
Lost my place.
You're on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It didn't let me go to the next one. Apologize.
Mayor, what Dr. Kirk is gonna talk about is actually the actual contracts that ODC has with like...
So, you got the, so I got them right here.
Yes.
We wind up having.
Those six.
We got Motran.
Right.
Black, Black Chamber.
Chamber.
The Black Chamber.
The Odessa Greater Chamber, the Greater Chamber.
Current media, UTPB.
UTPB Small Business Development Center in the city of Odessa.
Please forgive me, my email dumped out of there. I apologize.
Yeah, so those are the six that y'all are gonna need to approve, and ODC has already approved these.
We can do, we can do all the, all six at one shot?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, do we have any discussion on any of the six economic development contractors?
Don't worry about Dr..
We've got the package right here.
Yeah, they're in front of you, and so you can vote on them.
If anybody has any questions, any of them, there you can pull them up. If no questions, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve item twenty as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Vasquez. Second by Councilmember Swannar. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Great job.
Thank you. It's an honor to work with you.
It's a lot harder than making adjustments, isn't it?
Thanks so much.
Item twenty-one, consider approval of professional service agreement with Newton Engineering PC to provide bid and design services for reconstruction of Dorado Drive from Fodry Road to Mission Boulevard. Mr. Tucker?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. What I'm bringing to you tonight is a professional service agreement to hire Newton Engineering for design of Dorado Drive from Fodry Road to Mission. We've been working together on the scope, and we've defined that. What we're looking at doing is reconstructing the pavement and increasing and improving some of the drainage problems that exist on that road. This is one of the construction projects that we brought to you in work session. And he submitted a proposal for a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred, and we'd like approvals to proceed on this.
Joe, just to make everybody aware, that drainage situation sits right there at the corner of Dorado and.
San Antonio.
San Antonio.
Yeah.
Right in front of that building, the Lakeview Building.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that intersection holds water.
Yeah, it doesn't go anywhere.
It's torn up that pavement pretty, pretty bad.
I've seen it, and so, we were having a lot of drainage issues with the, one of the sprinkler heads.
Yes.
Also popping on there.
And it stands there.
Yeah, yeah.
The way it's supposed to drain isn't working anymore, because they've sited that area and built it up, and that's part of this project is to fix that.
Well, you're taking away the, you're taking away the bird bath, that's for sure.
Yes, that's our goal. He's ready to start design, so as soon as we get this awarded, he'll be underway.
How long will it take to do it? I know the people that go up and down the Royal Drive are already pretty excited.
Schedule. We're looking to have design done near the end of the year and get under construction probably February, March next year, and then have it done by, before the end of the year.
And you're taking it all the way down, is what I understand, and redoing the base and.
Yeah, we're doing full reconstruction.
That road needs it.
Is it, is that separated with a middle?
Median, yeah, yeah, which we.
So, we're talking both sides are gonna be done reconstructed?
Yes.
Forest Brothers and the people at Mission planted all those oak trees, paid for them, and we maintain them and water them and mow them, but it was a quite heavy investment they've already made on that. That road's just, that road's just been beat to heck.
Having that median really works for us, because each side's wide enough for two lanes of traffic, so we can reconstruct.
Right.
One half and keep two-way traffic going, and then just jump back over. So, it's gonna work good for us.
It's a heavily traveled road.
Yeah.
All right.
Counsel, do we have any other questions? Any comments? Not entertain a motion to accept item twenty-one as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Swannar. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously.
Thanks, Joe.
Item twenty-two, consider Ector County Elections Administrator Contract for General Municipal Election November fifth, twenty-twenty-four. City Secretary?
Mayor, Council, this is a contract for election services with the Ector County Administrator. They will do the services, and the contract outlines what is the responsibility of the city and what is the responsibility of the Elections Administrator.
So, this is your budget for three fifty-four?
It's budgeted for three fifty-four, but good news is that with all the other entities, there is a total of five entities that will be in the general election, so we will divide that cost by five.
Have we gotten that price yet?
We have not received the updated price. No, sir.
Okay. I don't know what's taking, there must be county math, but it's sure taking a long time. Five entities, no, that's fine. I'll tell Lisa myself. But because the last time we spent, it was, to me, I still agree with, disagree with that amount back four years ago. I understand we had an additional week, you know, in the early voting, then we had the, they had the runoff. It was still a huge, heavy price, and then our price came in, there were two entities. So, we have county elections, city elections.
Hospital.
College.
Odessa College and Ector County Utility District.
Okay, yeah, I wanna see that. I wanna see that check, okay.
And this also includes the, we had new, new machines, so this will be our, take care of that cost as well.
Okay. Well, any chance to get anything before, or we're just gonna get a bill at the end?
I will work on it.
Okay, I appreciate that. Please, please, because, yeah, we were blind going in that lap four years ago. Yeah, it's still kinda burned me a little bit. Any discussion on this? If not, entertain a motion for item twenty-two to consider Ector County Elections Administrator Contract, and we will allow the Secretary to negotiate that. And so, any questions? If no, any comments? Entertain a motion to accept item twenty-two as presented? I have a motion by Councilmember Swannar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mata. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously. We're gonna go into item eight miscellaneous. Appointment of boards. City Secretary?
We do not have any board appointments.
Beautiful. We're gonna go on to our favorite item of the night, item twenty-four adjournment. Entertain, seeing there's no more business before the City Council, entertain a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Swannar. Second by Councilmember Vasquez. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously. We are adjourned. Be careful going home.